Go ahead, Chuck.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. It is Tuesday, October 27, 2020. We are holding this meeting virtually in accordance with the Governor's executive order. Alan, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Chairperson Carey. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Mrs. Evans? Mrs. Granato?
Present.
Mr. Lesser?
Here.
Mr. Michaels?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chairperson, Mr. Healy?
Here.
Chairperson, Mr. Carey?
Here.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Diago Wen?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Cassio, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which state?
Stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 13, 2020, regularly scheduled board meeting?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Paradise. Any comments, questions? Seeing none with a motion on the table to approve minutes, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention?
Abstained.
So noted.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next agenda item, public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carey. I have two people waiting in the waiting room, so we'll admit 860-212-7884.
Good evening. 212-7884.
Maybe they're not unmuted, like me.
No, they're, it was unmuted for a second.
Okay.
Then they muted themselves.
Okay. Going to admit the second.
Here they are.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could say your name and address for the record.
Sir, Jennifer, St. Hilaire, 40 Hawthorne Way in Weathersfield.
Excellent. Thank you. You have five minutes.
So I was not able to hear anything previously, so I apologize if there has been a conversation. I'm calling, I called in tonight to ask a couple of questions of the board in response to the letter that was sent out today by Mr. Emmett regarding this decision to move from going forward with the full schedule to remote. I was wondering if there was ever going to be an opportunity where we heard more fully the decision, and if there was ever going to be an opportunity for the parents to weigh in and be part of this process. It's rather unsettling to receive a letter at this late hour when people have made childcare arrangements. I understand it's a fluid situation, but I wonder why we are different than every other town in our health district that's allowed their elementary schools to go back full time. I understand that the middle and high schools can present a challenge, but our children are suffering. They're not getting the educational needs that they have. Their mental and emotional health is struggling with this. And I just would ask the board to be more transparent and open and hear the concerns that are being raised by the parents, because I have not seen the opportunity yet to have that dialogue with the people who send their kids and are interested in making sure that their education is continued.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Carey, our other public comment phone call has dropped out.
Okay. That caller is still in here, Michael. Are we gonna?
I'm sorry. Say again, Mr. Carey.
Caller is still in our room.
I think she's expecting a response now. Chuck, tell her that it's not dialogue right now.
Elaine took care of it, but just so.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. We do not make comment or in public comment, just so you're aware. Moving on, communications, Mr. Emmett.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. And again, I understand that we don't respond to public comment, but certainly my communications this evening are pertinent to the public comment from Ms. St. Hilaire as well as a variety of other parents. Obviously, this is a fluid situation, and it was our intent to move forward with a transitional reopening of the Weathersfield Public Schools. We were looking at starting next Monday with grades pre-K, K and 1. We were also looking at bringing back a team for grade seven, a team for grade eight, and we were looking at bringing back our high school seniors. We have had ongoing conversations with the Department of Public Health as well as the Central Connecticut Health District. And the reality that we are facing right now is we are seeing a significant increase in the number of cases. And we had a conversation with the DPH this morning, talking about the fact that Hartford County has now moved into the moderate range. One of the pieces of advice from DPH today was to reduce the person density. And that's exactly opposite of what our reopening plan does, unfortunately. I also had the conversation with Charles Brown, the Director of the Central Connecticut Health District, this morning at approximately 11 o'clock. And he reports that Weathersfield specifically has seen a significant increase in the number of positive cases over the past three weeks. So much so that in the past day, he reports 10 positive cases in the day alone. On average, through late August and into September, we were averaging no more than five cases per week. So we're clearly seeing an increase and a spike in the number of cases. With that being said, I will say that the hybrid model thus far has served us well through the first eight-plus weeks of school. We've had a total of three positive cases among our students and our student community. We have had zero cases at the staff level. We have traced back the infection to outside, to community spread. Some of the other factors that we're dealing with also is an increasing number of students being quarantined. And we're finding that the bulk of our quarantines are based upon family gatherings and youth sports at this juncture. Certainly, it's my intent to bring kids back full time. It's absolutely what I want. It's best for kids. But I've also got the reality of increasing COVID numbers. The reality that our mitigation strategies are certainly going to be affected with regard to social distancing. And knowing full well that we've got an upcoming Thanksgiving holiday that we are fearful, quite frankly, of additional spread. We have been able to handle this process thus far very well. And my hope is, is that we're not going to have to get to a point where I have to close a school. Or we have to close down because we're short-staffed. Or because we have to have so many quarantined that we're unable to staff our buildings effectively. We're trying to provide the absolute utmost of educational opportunity for our kids while still maintaining a level of health and safety. We see this as a continued fluid situation. Obviously, we'll have a cohort calendar forthcoming tomorrow. I can certainly understand Ms. St. Hilaire's concern around this, this late notice. Our hope was to be able to start this reopening process next Monday. That was the intent. And the amount of work that's gone into this reopening planning has been extensive. It's not going away. We're not putting it on the shelf and leaving it there. We've clearly got a plan where we can bring students back into the building, but we must do so in a manner that is as safe and as healthy as possible for our students, for our families, and for our staff. So that is where we're at with regard to the reopening. One of the things I want to make sure that the board and the public are aware of also, one of the things that we did was we did a survey with regard to the number of parents opting for remote learning. When we started during the summer with regard to remote versus hybrid, we had approximately 84% of our families say hybrid and 16% say full remote. With the option of full reopening versus full remote, the numbers were virtually unchanged. So we did not see a significant number of families that opted to do the full remote. The full remote option will remain an option. The state has clearly articulated that they are not taking that off the table at this particular point in time. So we continue to have the bulk of our families wishing to have full in-person learning, which again, will certainly tax our ability to maintain social distance in our elementary classrooms. Couple of other items for you, just to let you know, last evening, we had our first session of the Social Justice Coalition. This is a joint effort between the Town of Weathersfield and the Weathersfield Board of Education. We've done two informational sessions, and last evening, we had a total of 71 participants that sat in on the meeting virtually. And we have another meeting coming up that is scheduled for November 30. So we're certainly looking forward to having additional residents participate in this important endeavor. This is something that's going to be taking place over time. It's not a quick fix. It's not a one-and-done. We hope to make some meaningful change in the Town of Weathersfield moving forward. Just an update with regard to winter sports. Right now, at this point in time, we wait additional information from the CIEC. I understand today during our DPH call that the CIEC and the DPH are going to be talking. Right now, there is a tentative schedule for the start of winter sports with practices beginning on November 21. At this juncture, we're going to be continuing to wait till probably mid-November for CIEC to make a decision with regard to sports that are considered a higher risk. Those might be wrestling, ice hockey, boys' and girls' basketball, and of course, indoor track with regard to facilities and availability of facilities to host meets. So I have more information forthcoming. I am pleased to say that thus far, our fall sports schedule is moving along nicely. We're having some great success with our athletic teams and doing well. And I have to say to parents, thank you very much for honoring our limited number of spectators. I do know that some districts have banned spectators altogether. I'm glad that we've been able to at least let moms and dads be able to see their children participate in sports. And finally, last but not least, I do want to mention and give a shout out to our principals. October is National Principals Month, so Mr. Moore, Ms. Bannon, Ms. Docore, Mr. Hoarder, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Craig, and Ms. O'Connor, thank you very much for all of the work you're doing here for the Weathersfield Public Schools. And with that, that is the conclusion of communications.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on, we have action item. Mr. Healy, do we, do you have a recommended motion for us?
Yes, I apologize. Recommendation. It's not the class size. Okay, recommended, make a motion. I move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve an extension to the current unpaid leave of absence for identification number 905406 beyond the previously approved 60 days of unpaid leave granted by the Superintendent and the Board of Education. This request is for extended unpaid leave, beginning on November 9, 2020, and continuing through December 31, 2020 of the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Paradise. Mr. Emmett, any discussion?
This simply is an extension of a leave that you have already approved. I certainly support this unpaid leave for this particular employee.
And Mike, is this going smoothly with the sub?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Chuck?
Yes, Ms. Granato.
Just a question, Michael. Do we have a lot of people on a leave of absence this year with this?
We, we have, in terms of COVID leave, we have a handful. Again, we have the variety from surgical procedures to maternity leaves, to medical leaves. So right now, we're, we're running slightly above where we typically are this time of year. But that's something that Mr. Donahue monitors very frequently. Trent, do you have anything else to add with regard to that?
Yeah, so thank you, Michael. As Michael indicated, you know, it's a fairly typical year with the number of people that are out for a variety of different reasons, medical and other. In regards to COVID, I think our, our employees have been incredibly responsive to, you know, making it a priority to be at work when, when they can. We have had a number of folks that have expressed an interest in, in a need to be away from work, whether it's for their own personal situation, to care for a loved one, or we've had a number of situations that have been emergency daycare and childcare issues for where families just haven't been able to secure daycare. So we're managing through all of those. We've started to see some folks come back. We have a number of folks that are hopefully coming back during the month of November and early December. And we continue to monitor that very closely. And as Michael indicated, this is just simply somebody that's currently out and needs a little bit longer before they feel comfortable returning to, to work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none with a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to reports and discussion items. Annual class size report as of 10/1/2020, Mr. Emmett.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carey. In your Friday packet and posted up on our website is the annual class size report for the Weathersfield Public Schools. And this is a document that we create each year to give us a flavor of what our numbers are looking like at that October 1 mark. I can report that currently, the Weathersfield Public Schools has 3,542 students enrolled. This is a decrease of 38 students compared to October 1 of 2019. In pre-K, we currently have 62 students. Last year, we had 68. At the elementary level, K 6, this year, we reported 1,770 students. Last year, on October 1, we had 1,795. At the middle school level, grades seven and eight, this year, we report 578 students. Last year, we reported 567, so a slight increase there. At the high school level, as of 10/1/2020, we reported 1,121 students. And last year, we had 1,144. And our Transition Academy for our students in ages 18 to 21, this year, our enrollment count is currently 11 students, and that is up from six last year. So we've seen a sizable increase in the number of students in our WTA program. From a standpoint of class size, obviously, this report summarizes class size enrollment for elementary, middle, and high school. As of October 1, 2020, at the elementary level, the elementary level average class size is 18.72 students per classroom. This is up slightly compared to the 18.49 in 1920. The average class size for middle school is 21.42, and it is 19.79 for the high school. And I'd like to also report that overall, we have two fewer elementary classrooms compared to 2019. With regard to enrollment, Table 1 discusses the enrollment numbers and current class sizes. For the most part, our class sizes look good across the elementary level. We do see higher numbers at the intermediate grade levels, grades five and six, and they are spread pretty consistently across the district. At the middle and high school levels, you'll see a slight difference compared to last year's class size report. Some of the reasons for that are the fact that we shifted to a full-year PE to trimester-based PE. We shifted full-year music to trimester-based music for band, chorus, and orchestra. And we eliminated the 2.5-day and 30-day schedule rotations in favor of full-term length classes offered each day. And again, the October 1 class size report is a snapshot of the classes that we're actively running on that date. At the high school level, again, you'll see some changes in the total number of classes. Weathersfield High School approached scheduling differently for the 2021 school year. They are fortunate to have someone who has previous schedule building experience and utilize the knowledge to rebuild the high school schedule. Obviously, our focus is making sure that we're providing the utmost and opportunities for our students. Again, the high school made a few adjustments based on the pandemic as well. One, classes were given a firm maximum size, which forced no classes to fall within the 30-plus student range. This was obvious even within the hybrid model and cohorting, limiting the number of physical bodies in a particular classroom. Some of our high school classrooms are not very large. In addition to that, they had the unfortunate decision to not run robotics this year. Again, in the pandemic, we had to make some tough decisions with regard to availability of courses, so robotics had to go by the wayside for this year. It is a popular course, but it relies on group work and in speaking with the teacher. And not knowing where that pandemic was headed, they made the decision to offer other electives like transportation and construction that could be shifted toward individual instruction and the allowance of effective social distancing. Again, I think the high school, the middle school, and elementary schools have done yeoman's work with regard to scheduling. Obviously, at the middle and high school levels, the scheduling is a little bit more complex because of the fact that we're trying to provide kids with as many different opportunities as possible. So with that, I will answer any questions you have. And again, if there's something I can't answer this evening, I will certainly get that information out to the individual schools for follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Emmett? Yes, Elaine?
Mike, I just heard you say that we had to do away with robotics, which became part of the curriculum when we got the new school open, because we had the corner wing there where they could have the availability to do that. And I'm sad that we have to do that, but I understand the pandemic. But my question now says, you said that we can't do that because we have group work there. How are we handling science in the elementary now? Because that was always group work, too. I think Bobby would say that's right, right? Group was little sets of people working on sound, or how is that being delivered?
Yeah, actually, great question, Elaine. And going even beyond science, let's think about Teachers, Teachers College, Readers Writers Workshop. We do a lot. The way we educate our kids, we, we focus on that small group instruction.
Yeah.
Focus on collaboration. And, you know, this pandemic has forced us to reconfigure our rooms where we have done away with those kidney-shaped tables, where you had a teacher that was, you know, doing burning records with, with small groups of kids while other kids were working interactively. The, the challenge that we face is, in terms of maintaining that social distance, we've had to go back to a more traditional approach where we have spread out classrooms and desks are in rows. There is a lot of reliance upon technology, even for those students that are in in-person learning because of the fact we've got a cohort at home, coupled with the students that are accessing full remote. So a lot of reliance upon technology, Elaine, and a lot of, of individual work, unfortunately.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to clarify, because I thought I saw, maybe it was on Facebook, some teacher doing us activity with the smartboard. I think it was like dissecting a frog or something. I couldn't see the animal, but maybe she was sharing the parts of an insect, who knows? But that's the delivery now, then the kid's actually looking at an insect in a, in a, on their desk and saying, there's noticed three parts. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Emmett.
You're welcome.
Moving on to announcements of information, please look in your packet. In case there is a committee meeting, if you cannot make it, make sure you let the Chair of the Committee know. Board of Ed, meetings held, WEC, 10/20/20. That stands for Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative. Ms. Granato?
Okay, well, the WEC had their annual meeting, which is Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, on October 20. And we actually had a very large group. There were over 50 people participating in this virtual meeting. Coordinator is Kim Bobbin. She was our host. Whitney Simmons, an early childhood consultant, spoke of working with parents, children, and teachers to solve early learners' issues before they enter school and working with young, school-aged children. Next, the group was led in a discussion by our own Sally Distoli, who was working with comments on how COVID was affecting families and school. The guest speaker for the evening was Donna Rooney, an early childhood specialist, who spoke on supporting our children, the impact of COVID on the development of young children. And I just got today in the minutes that there was the TLC Virtual Preschool Program is currently being offered by the Town of Weathersfield. And to please go to the Weathersfield.gov recreation site to sign up, and that's for three- and four-year-olds. And also, there was information about books called Write by Text that are free to caregivers and families. So those are available for parents. I must thank Kim. She organized this beautifully so that we enjoyed a virtual meeting. We didn't have anything to eat like we usually do, but she did an excellent job in informing in our annual meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. CREC Council, 10/21/20, Ms. Granato?
Yeah, so the next day, I sat in the same seat, and we did the CREC Council, which is the Capital Regional Education Council, of which Weathersfield is a member, along with 35 other surrounding towns. This council is responsible for the regional magnet schools, Project Choice. And also this year, CREC has started the school year with organizing and working the Head Start Program in the Hartford area. The committee reports included information that CREC's finances are being audited, and they soon hope to have final results. Tim Sullivan, who is the Superintendent of CREC, expressed his delight in the success of the Teacher Residency Program. And I read that elsewhere tonight in our superintendent's goals, which is student teaching, teaching and working to find a diverse group of young educators. And they also spend just about the whole year student teaching. There have been 11 graduates of this program who are now working as full-time teachers, both with CREC and other school systems. Interesting, they did have another drive-through so that remote learners could get supplies to continue their learning away from their classroom. And last, Patrice McCarthy, the Legislature's liaison for CAPE and CREC, spoke of a possible virtual assembly of the legislation legislators on November 19. The assembly hopes to put less on the plates of school systems and to support them more. So those are my remarks on WEC and CREC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Next, Student Programs Service Committee, 10/21/20, Mr. Healy?
Yeah, the committee met earlier this week, and obviously by Zoom, and had a very thorough presentation coordinated through Sally of number, how we're doing with remote learning and how we're approaching it. Excuse me. And how it's working at the K through 12 level. So we spent a couple hours going through programmatically how our teachers are trying to engage kids, obviously, every day with different form, formats and protocols and some of the things they've learned and their personal experiences. So it was, it was very good briefing also. We're doing a lot as well to reach out to parents, to listen to their concerns, to coordinate with them on learning and following up with kids and, and answering some of the questions that they've had. So it was a, a pretty extensive and thoughtful presentation.
Thank you. Finance and Operations Committee, 10/27/20, Mr. Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Just had a quick update from Matt this evening. He shared a reforecast. We are about 363,000 under budget in what continues to be a very fluid school year. Hopefully, our numbers will become a little more solid as we move through November and December to be able to plan for the rest of the school year. The other thing we just touched on briefly is that we will begin some pre-planning stuff as we begin the budget process coming up shortly. So more to come on that as that process begins.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Meeting scheduled, Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, the WEC, which will be an 11 Meeting scheduled, Weatherfield Early Childhood Collaborative, the WEC, which will be in eleven nine twenty at four thirty. There is no unfinished business? Mr. Emmett, is there anyone on the pipeline for public comment? You're muted. Michael, you're muted.
I got it. Thank you. We have eight six zero six eight zero five one five four. Thank you for coming back on.
Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Four, thank you for coming back on. Yes. This is Melissa Zapparannick at one thirty one Valley View Drive. This is Melissa Zapparannick at one thirty one Valley View Drive.
All right, you may.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, if I have a couple of questions in regards to the decisions that were made today in regards to the children not going back full time. The first question I have is that I understand that there's been some exceptions made to allow some students to go back for both cohorts. I was wondering what the exception process is and how that promotes the right to equal education, equality in education when not all of the students can go back full time.
Okay, just. Oh, okay, there you go. You're keep going.
The second question that I have is that I would like to understand why if our state is in phase three and our students can be in restaurants with seventy five percent capacity and they could be with worshiping with two hundred people. And your numbers today indicate that the class, average class sizes are eighteen with sixty percent of the students back. Why they can't be in class sizes of ten. We have gotten an enormous amount of feedback from teachers indicating that the students are doing a fantastic job with the masks and they're doing a fantastic job with the cleaning and the facilities. And I really think that it's time to get these kids back in school. And also, I think the one of the comments that you made tonight was that the majority of parents believe that the kids should be back in school. And I'm curious why we're not listening to those parents and trying to find ways to get them back in school. And lastly, I'd like to understand a little bit more about the surrounding towns because I understand that Rocky Hill is back full time for their elementary kids. I understand that Newington is back four days a week. I understand that Cromwell is back. I have friends in the Crec schools where they've actually had positive cases and their kids are back full time as well. I'd like to understand what the differences are between our schools and theirs specifically associated with the health district because I believe we all share the same health district. Those are my final comments.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the line, Mr. Emmett?
No one else on the line, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. Moving on to board comment, anyone wishing to make board comment? Yes, Ms. Paradise.
Sorry, guys, but I have one comment here. I understand totally what the parents are feeling, even though my children are out of school. It's the babysitting and it's the helping those little ones. Even on my street, the parents are going nuts with the little ones trying to get them online. And I guess, Mike, I do understand them comparing us to Rocky Hill and other schools when you say the Department of Health because I think that same Charles Brown covers those towns with the COVID numbers and the DPH's reports. So I do think those people who called in need a clarification on why we're not reopening. If those towns can keep going, maybe it's just our our social distancing problem. But I also want the parents to know, and Chuck, you need to help me here, that we, as a board, are not getting the survey results, not getting the health department data that Mike's getting. And the decision on reopening when or going hybrid when is coming from an administrative team, not from the board. So I think when the people call in and say, you know, they hear Mike use the word we are have talked to Charles Brown. We, as a board, haven't talked to him. We get only the same data the parents get. So I I think that's a clarification. They're calling in for our help. You, Chuck, John, Bobby, and yet we're we're only part of the team to hear the decisions made, not making the decisions. So I think that's a clarification, the town, because and I don't think it's anyone's fault except that the news gets outside and you see New Haven's board making the decision. So it's an assumption that people see that the board is part of this decision making, you know, or you see another town on the on the TV news saying, well, the board has decided not to open till the end of October. So I I would just like the parents to know that we are not the decision makers. There's a team that gets the up to date data to make these decisions. And I don't know who's on that team except Mike Emmett, but you might know, Chuck. So that's my board comment.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Mr. Lesser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things. First, the Career Advisory Board met last night. We had a spirited meeting, twelve or thirteen folks. And we have three things that I'll talk about real quickly. One is we're going to do a remote career fair and we're going to partner with Newington. As many of you remember and know, Mark Danaher originally came from Newington and has great contacts there. And I think this will be a good opportunity for our students and also be able to expand the number of businesses. Second is we have three lunch and learn scheduled with business professionals to come in and talk to our students. And thirdly, we have forty parents who signed up to do mock interviews. So we did this last year. Some of you may have participated. I had the opportunity to participate in the mock interviews. It's a great opportunity to help the students with interview skills. And again, this is all to help them build the career building skills and the skills necessary to go on past Weatherfield High School into college and careers. And then, so that's it for the Career Advisory Board. And I did ask Michael this earlier, but maybe he can go over and comment. Snow day, I'm getting the people saying, well, what's going to happen on Friday? And I said, I don't know if it's good. And they're saying it's going to snow. And then the second one is I also have had some questions, Michael, that Election Day, we're off on Tuesday. Is Wednesday going to be a typical Wednesday where we're closed or is Wednesday, I guess that's November fourth? What kind of day that? So I'm getting some parents who ask me that. Snow days and election, the day after Election Day.
Yeah, I'll talk to both Kenny. Thank you for the questions. With regard to the snow days, we had approached the State Department of Education to look at the feasibility of being able to utilize a remote learning day in lieu of a snow day and have that count. The Commissioner of Education went to the State Board of Education. They approved allowing us to utilize a remote learning day in lieu of a snow day, but charged the State Department of Education with providing guidelines with how to go about doing that. Those guidelines came out through CAE this evening, so I haven't even had the opportunity to look at them. We've had some conversation with our teachers' union about this already. I think that it will involve some planning. Obviously, from my perspective, I think what's going to end up happening is I'm probably likely going to have to make the decision for a closure or to go to remote learning far in advance of when I typically do, which is when I get up at three in the morning and talk with all of my area superintendent colleagues. So that particular piece, you know, remains to be sorted out. But right now, the state has given us the authority to be able to utilize a remote learning day in lieu of a snow day, having to add those days on at the end of the year. And then with regard to the schedule for next week, next Tuesday is a election day, so it's a professional development day. As I said earlier in my communications, we will have out the November cohort calendar tomorrow morning, so that will spell out exactly what we'll be doing. Also important to remember, the following week is Veterans Day. So Veterans Day typically is a full remote learning day, but that's a day off. So Tiago, you don't have to log in and do any asynchronous learning on Veterans Day. And then just to let everybody know, with regard to Veterans Day, just a week out, right now, we have a ceremony that is scheduled for Weatherfield High School out in the parking lot. And again, should conditions change with regard to infection rates going up, that will come from the town in terms of whether or not that would need to be canceled. So.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Just a quick note to Kenny. If you could have Mark, I'm still waiting for an email from him for that stuff. Second comment question about hybrid versus fullback and and that. I know that we are looking at different information to make that decision. It's not just one piece that we look at. Is there, given today's numbers that have come out, which has prompted the decision to go or to stick with the hybrid model? Is it safe to say that this is, would you consider this now the baseline in which you would make that decision is, I guess, part one? Part two is, and I guess we'll learn perhaps more tomorrow with the the new cohort calendar. What is the plan for number of days, weeks out from when we hit that high mark? So in the interest of getting parents to a spot where we know it's not just because we hit ten today and we've gone, we've switched to hybrid, that doesn't mean if the number comes down next Monday that we're back to this. So what is the the weeks or days that that fluctuates before we are back to one or the other?
Yeah, that's a great question, Lou. Thanks for that question. I had that conversation with Charles Brown today and asked about, you know, what would I be looking at in terms of timeframe? And he said at this point in time, it's difficult to delineate exactly how long this spike is going to go. We obviously have a cohort calendar available for November. We've planned out a cohort calendar for December. And on the flip side, you know full well, we've planned out a full reopening across the board that goes right into mid-December. So we're prepared to do either or. Right now, as I said earlier in the conversation tonight, our infection rate in Weatherfield is going up pretty significantly. It's a positivity rate in Weatherfield. My last look at it yesterday afternoon was like eight point five. You know, typically, as I go back to August and September, we had a positivity rate of anywhere between point five and the highest in the month of September, I think was one point four. The numbers are definitely going up. Our neighbors in Newington were north of nine. Newington paused their reopening plan. They started a little bit ahead of us and they've gotten in K through four and five through twelve, they've stopped. Many of the other districts have not engaged in any conversation with regard to a full reopening at the middle or high school level. And again, I think that, you know, what each of these districts is going to start to struggle with as the numbers continue to escalate. They are full reopening. At what point in time might they need to consider going to the hybrid? Again, I understand, Lou, that this is not something that parents are fond with and the survey data clearly indicates that parents want their kids back in school. But again, I have to balance that desire with the data that's coming forward. You'll also notice with regard to state data, Elaine, the data that parents get, the parent is the same data that you get, that I get, and that's what I use. So those learning indicators are on our website. They're updated every single week. This past week, for the first week, it's a fourteen day rolling average. We moved from the low range into the moderate range. They also break it downtown by town. So currently, Weatherfield is listed in the yellow category, which is a certain number of infections per. And in conversation with Charles Brown today, he fully expects that Weatherfield by the end of the week will have moved up to orange or potentially even up into the red. That's a significant outbreak of of infection. We have to look at that. So that that's the justification in the background of of what I use. And again, I can't say this enough. It's collaboration with the health district, with the Department of Public Health as well on a weekly basis.
I have no, I I support it totally, Michael. I just wanted to know, the people to know what you're using, you know?
Certainly.
That's all.
Thank you. Jim, Mr. Riley.
Just had a a comment in regards to the book that was forwarded to Hamner by Catherine O'Connor. She's an alumni of Hamner and went all the way through Weatherfield High School. I graduated with her. I sent her a copy of the one page Hamner newsletter to her and she responded back and said, "Thank you so much for forwarding the Hamner newsletter. That is so very good of all of you all on the board and Patrick Cohn for accepting the books and for this wonderful recognition. It has truly been an honor for me. I really appreciate it greatly." Catherine.
Great connection. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Granato.
The Weatherfield Education Foundation met on Thursday, October twenty second, and I know they're not a committee of the board, but they're an important committee that committee that works to get funds for enhancing and enriching our curriculum. The Mini Grant Committee is working to get info out to all the elementary schools about applying for grants. Please check out the work being done by this organization on the website and Facebook page. And after Student Program and Services meeting the other night, you realize that they do need lots of hands on things still that has not gone away. And mini grants are a great way to get a hold of those things. The group also discussed this year's fundraiser, which is called Cook Along. And it's in collaboration with the Charles Restaurant. A flyer will be out. It looks like this. Everybody would be getting one. And it's one of these virtual cooking in which you will cook along with Chef Tommy Caldi of the Charles and you'll get it, you get a ticket that with the ticket comes their ingredients, a bottle of wine and your YouTube site where you can go to to learn how to cook the special meal that is presented by the Charles. By the way, today, the W Weatherfield Education Foundation was on Better Connecticut to advertise this. So more people we can get to buy tickets, the more money that's available for mini grants and for other things that the school, the teachers and the schools need. I also would like to thank the principals for their Friday update. It's really very challenging not to be in the schools, and I don't think we should be in the schools right now. But to see what's going on is wonderful and they give us great updates. So I thank them for that. And my very last thing, my last comment is to tell people to please vote. It is your right. It's your privilege. But one of the best civic lessons you can give to your child is to bring them along and bring them along and show them how democracy works. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Yes, Diego.
I just want to make a quick comment to the board. Prior to the meeting, I connected to many of my high school peers. And the general consensus I received was an outpouring of support for the continuation of the hybrid program. So I just wanted to bring it to to the attention of the board that a majority of the high school students are in support of the continuation of the hybrid program.
Thank you.
That's good to hear.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
A second. Thank you, Lou. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. We're going to executive session.